I'll call the meeting to order for July 11th, 2019, Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so the first thing we'll be working on are the evaluations. And I, did you bring all of them, Don?
I did not. I just brought the ones that-
I have the self ones from the departments that we did not have, the department head to do it. And then-
And you also have John Paul's that you need to do the evaluation for.
Do you have a form for that for us?
I do not, but I can get one in between.
Okay. And then, um, did you just bring a spreadsheet with the scores?
I have not brought that yet. I wasn't sure, a hundred percent sure what you guys were looking for.
That's what I think we need to do. But the first thing we can talk about is how we want to do the breakdown. Okay, now I'm getting confused because the Sheriff's Department had a totally different form. But was ours one up, one through five, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so we had one through five and how many total points?
We don't have one of them sheets.
No, we need to look at it.
All right, let me go-
We had one through five and it was, I can't remember. I was scoring them on an average, so it would have been like three is satisfactory, under three, you know, needs improvement, unsatisfactory, and then up to five would be exceeds expectations or requirements or something like that.
Have you guys done David's?
No, we did not.
Okay.
So we'll need two forms, one for David, one for John Paul, and, and the spreadsheet for the others.
You got David's correction, I guess. He left out paragraph three on his self-evaluation.
Did you get one on the internet?
He emailed one out.
Oh, I did not read it.
I don't know.
So I have it here.
I don't think he will get some.
Well, it was on the internet, an email.
But he did, uh, I asked him and I read, told him he left paragraph three out. And he went to work and sent it out to everybody on email.
Okay. I don't have internet on my phone right now, so.
So he sent that directly to you guys?
Yeah. He should have went through you, Don.
I thought he did, but I don't know. I didn't look at his addresses.
He's there. I can ask him to-
This one's called meeting room, right, Don?
Yeah.
It says, it says meeting room on mine.
Yes, we have the meeting room one.
Yeah.
And it's 2019.
Is that a one or an exclamation?
Exclamation.
Okay, I have it right then. I'm just waiting for it to connect.
There you go.
Hey, lady.
I can ask him just to print it really quickly and bring it to you.
I can pull it up once my internet gets connected here.
Thank you. Thank you.
I could, do you have it? I could email it forward to you.
I, well, I'm, I'm waiting for my connection on the wifi here, but.
I asked him to-
All right.
I'm sure if it's on there, I-
Tell us to get it there.
So we're working with 25 cents. What we did was in years prior, they were doing 50 cents January 1st every year across the board. We did 25 cents, saved 25 for this middle of the year pay, which will be July 26th, uh, based on the evaluations. So we need to come up with a scale as far as 10 cents, 15 cents, 25 cents, something like that. If you fall within this range, it's the 10, this range 15, this range 25. That's my suggestion. I'm open to any kind of discussion on that.
And the best max would be 50?
No, it's 25 because the total for the year was 50 and we gave 50% of that as the cost of living.
And now 25 cents is merit, max, and the minimum would be what, zero?
And, you know, I know it's not a lot of money, but I think it's setting the precedent that-
Really rewarding them with it.
Right. If you come on time every day and work your butt off and I'm late all the time and don't put as much effort in, why should we get the same increase? I would actually like to see at the beginning of the year, it be based on the merit, you know, the evaluation and the merit for the entire amount. I mean, cost of living, I was talking to the lady that runs the Ellsworth, Ellsworth City Office. She hasn't had a raise. She maxed out on her income. She hasn't had a raise in six or seven years. I mean, it's kind of one or the other, I think. You either do it based on your participation and your effort or you just keep deciding that everybody gets it across the board, but we can't afford that.
Yeah. I would still maybe give us some cost of living like we did. I think that's, because that includes everybody. If you don't, if you give, some people say they're very good, the merits, and some people don't get it. I think you're going to create people getting upset and I know maybe that's the way it should be, but, you know, I don't-
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, they maybe get some people upset. They think they're getting, you know, cheated. And maybe that's the way it ought to be. I don't know. But I, I, I think you're going to create, open up a window there where you would cause them of that though. You know what I'm saying?
But I think that's the point. I mean, if you-
But then they'll say it's nepotism. They'll say it's favoritism. They like me-
Well, we just have to publish a policy, a written policy, and then we'll think about how we want to do it. If we want to publish a policy.
I think the favoritism nepotism issue is more of a, more of a problem when you just blanket everyone across the board because then you have those people who can be late every day, who can leave when they want.
They don't get punished for it.
Right. There's no, there's no, there's no encouragement or reason to put forth effort if you know that your job is secure, no matter what you do. I mean, not only secure, but you're going to get the same raise as everyone else.
Yeah. No, you got a good point. Maybe we should just do merit raises.
That's my personal preference.
And maybe every other year or something of a cost of living, you know, I wouldn't cut them off forever. You know what I'm saying? But I think I agree with you. Yeah, you should reward people who are doing what good work.
Well, ideally, I would like to see how much money we can potentially save using a benefits management company to budget for our, um, health insurance because last year we put in 1.1 million for health insurance. You know, that's a lot of money out of a six and a half million dollar budget to, to, it's basically in addition to payroll and so people need to see it that way. If you're making $12 an hour, but you have a family benefits package, you're making $22 an hour.
Yeah, you'll make $10 an hour in benefits. Yeah, we need to really state that more because sometimes everybody winds up, we don't pay much enough.
Right.
Yeah, well, we could pay what we could, just say, okay, we'll give you 20 bucks an hour and no benefits. You want it? Then you go buy your own health insurance.
Right.
See what they say about that.
Well, unfortunately-
The civilian government has a neat way of doing it. Well, you're familiar with this, I suppose. Just call a step thing. You have a certain pay grade that you're in. You have steps zero through 10, one through 10, and those are merit-based. And so your rank pay actually is based on that, but that's something that has to come from an evaluation. So you evaluate somebody that's almost exactly like what you're doing, except you're just calling something else. I think you can write that up.
I know it was that way where I was too.
Yeah, merit-based.
You had evaluations.
I want to see, the other idea is when you, when you put a cap on a position, it encourages that person to, once they hit that ceiling, they may be looking for another job. Not necessarily somewhere else, but within their department.
And also to do minimum work because they know they're at the top and they never go, you know, they might just show it up and do nothing.
Call retired in place.
Yeah, retire on the job.
All right, Peter.
No, that's-
Well, you have, you know, for example, you may have someone who's making just as much as, or potentially just as much as their department head because they've been there so long. Meanwhile, they're not going to put forth the effort to apply for that department head position when it comes open because it's more responsibility. But if it was more pay because they capped out at a certain amount, then they may take on that.
We don't have no cap on us, do we?
None, none. But other governmental agencies do.
Well, I don't, I, I'm not against what you're saying.
I'm just talking concepts. I'm, I'm, for today, we just need to apply the 25 cents on a scale and go from there. But just, you know, in the, on the grander scale, there's also the idea of what we can do with the benefits package because right now we're paying 90% of everything. We could potentially pay 75% of-
Your premiums.
Premiums across the board and raise everyone's income, which means if you want to spend it on your family plan, you do. And if I don't, I take my dollars per hour. You know, it's kind of like-
That penalizes people with families, so. Four kids is an example. Health, health insurance is a big deal because kids are going to lose a lot of-
Well, yeah, look at the premiums now. Like my pay single, like 80 bucks a month. And you, you know, if you pay through here with family, you probably pay 200, 300, you know?
Right.
So, so, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's more. That's what's expensive. Go out and buy Blue Cross by yourself. I was paying 900 a month, five years ago, at a farmer, for one single guy. And he got less and less benefits and higher deductives. It's unbelievably expensive. I mean, you go out and buy, that's what's not these people. Some of these young guys whine that we don't pay much. I said, well, you go out and buy your own health insurance.
Right, right.
They don't realize what that costs if you have to buy it yourself.
Right.
Now, I know they say, well, you can't eat benefits. I say, well, you can't eat benefits.
I know.
That's true too, but, you know.
We also don't want to be the ideal employer for someone who just wants benefits though because they're not here for the pay or the out, the work output. They're just here for the benefits. You don't want to do, you don't want to put ourselves in that.
I think that's who we have a lot of.
I think in the past, probably. I don't know what the current, you know, I was actually surprised to see the breakdown of our plans.
Because a lot of other businesses don't pay as good a health insurance and stuff as we do. And I'm not against that. I'm just saying they don't.
Right.
Because it's so expensive.
Corporate decision.
Yes. A lot of your private, you know, we'll go to work downtown here for, you know, a small company. Not, not, obviously your CDAs, your big companies are going to have better benefits. But I don't know how good benefits like Courtside has or, uh, you know.
Towers or, yeah, I'm not sure.
US Towers, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they have some, I'm sure. They may be very good. I don't know. I shouldn't have said it now, but.
Yeah, I'm not familiar enough.
But it isn't so expensive nowadays. Like for a family like you, you got your children and this stuff. That's a lot of health insurance, it's high dollar.
Well, and you got to have it because kids use it.
Well, yeah, you got to know, yeah.
Sniffle here and book an arm there.
What do you think of self-insurance? We was talking about that a little bit. I don't think we're big enough for, it'd probably be-
Well, the, the, this claw valley, I think, is-
They promote that, yeah.
Well, it's, it's partially self-funded and I need to study that a little further, but that was probably going to be one of my picks because-
I'm a little scared to go self-funded because if we had a-
Catastrophic event.
Catastrophic event and that would blow us out of the water.
But that's the, from my understanding, that's the purpose of that third-party insurer. You are self-funding up to that cap amount and then that's where the third party takes in. And they're taking the risk saying most people won't exceed the amount that you're covering. But if and when they do, that's the portion that we cover.
No, that may be.
I need to stop you guys because that wasn't on the special insurance.
Okay. You're right. But we were talking about how manipulating the insurance can affect potential pay rates.
Yeah, you're right. We get off topic here. Yeah, we should probably do this now.
Yeah. So we need to enter into executive session, but I think first we should talk about how we want to structure the-
We got your rankings now?
Yeah, so we have, um-
Here, you can give them to us. You get one, I get one.
Yeah. Did you input the sheriff's office already too?
The sheriff's office is the big one. I'm not sure if I can, it didn't choose to go down the aisle and across.
But that's okay. That's, well, they were on a totally different scale because they didn't use the office, the office of-
Bigger forms.
Spreadsheet. So.
I'm a little hesitant because it's not going to open record right there, so.
Yeah, we need to go into executive session. Okay, let's, let's study the scale so that in executive session, so we can figure out how we're going to do it. Then we'll come out and set the prices for the rankings. And we might need to go back in. So let's just do 10 minutes first so we can really look at the scale. We're not going to do by individual right now. We're just going to look at the scaling process and the percentages. So I move to enter into executive session for 10 minutes for the purpose of analyzing 2019 employee evaluations to set a pay scale for merit-based raises pursuant to KSA 7543192B number one, which is to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the commission room with the commission and county clerk.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded for a 10-minute executive session. All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so we will set the scale now because we don't need to discuss anything about personnel. We just need to discuss the scale.
60 or above is a dime.
Okay.
What's your next break then?
That's my question.
One, two, three, four, five, six. I guess it'd be 75 then, wouldn't it?
It should be threes and a four, which would come out to 63%, wouldn't it?
Well, if you had fours all the way across, you'd be at 75.
We don't have that many of them.
But I'm saying threes all the way across would be 60, threes all the way plus a four would be 63.
Yeah.
Do you want to, do we increment them that way? Because then, wow, I bet then you'd have to go up by every-
I put two fours at least.
Yeah. Or even half and half, which would be-
How many, how many gradations do you want? Three, 10, 15, and a quarter?
Yeah, yeah. Let's do that.
The quarter, I'd make that fairly steep. I would make that, uh, at least 80.
We don't hold out like one or two of them.
Well, and that's the old idea is we want, we want a goal for people to be looking at.
Right, a goal.
I would say 80, that'd be a quarter.
Okay, so, so then it's 60, 70, and 80 is what you're saying? 60%, 70%, and 80% would be 10, 15, and 25 cents.
Would be, seem to be equitable to me.
And are, are we going to do anything about 10? But the problem is 10 to 15 is only five and 15 to 25 is 10. So we should have a 75%-
That's what I originally thought was 60, 75, and 80. Well, you can, then you have four. It's all right too. I don't care.
20 cents would be-
60, 70, and 75?
And 80.
10, 15, and 20?
Uh huh.
Well, we have quite a few people, like in I would department or under 60, you're not going to get nothing. Is that all right, is it? Well, I'm not, I'm just saying.
We can also drop that down to the 5 cents. I mean, you could, we can drop all the way-
And if we want to try to-
We can do by five cent, five cent increments would put you down to 55%, 60%.
Well, yeah, but I'm kind of against having needs improvement.
I agree.
I think if you're going to get a merit base, you ought to be-
There or up?
Yeah. And I don't think we need to cut it below 60. If you're going to have merit, let's put some merit in there.
But I think we want to promote morale too, and a bunch of people don't get merit raises and let all those do. And everybody be talking that they got this and they did-
But how do you promote morale by giving rewards for unsatisfactory performance? It really, it's kind of an oxymoron.
But there's going to be that complaint out there by those people saying, I didn't get nothing. And they think maybe they were doing fine. Some of these people are and, uh-
Here's what it comes out to. 10, 10 cents, which is right now our minimum for just doing your job satisfactorily, is an extra $208 a year. Do you see what I'm saying? So instead of a bonus of $208 for doing your job, just at the, at the bare requirements, you're getting that 208 over time in your pay rate, which you're also getting taxes taken out of, but it's the idea. So then, really, anything below that is not, I mean, you're going to get, what, a half of that? That, that doesn't add up to anything.
So everybody under 60 is going to get nothing, right? That's a lot of bad things.
Which means you're not doing your job quite properly.
Based on that manager's opinion.
You have to talk to your manager and say, boss?
Exactly. This encourages, this encourages-
I'm not getting this better.
Well, I think some managers already figured that out and promote their people up here. And then we have some that don't.
But that shows you their, their mentality.
But that gives us our opportunity to do our influence on the manager by saying, you're not treating your employees correctly by giving everybody a hundred percent across the board. That doesn't help anybody out.
Or 50.
Either way, you know.
I actually think that a lot of them were, there was a spread in each department. You could tell, you know, at one end was a better performance, at one end was a poorer performance. So there was a, some scrutiny there and what we're dealing with is that scale being up here for one department and being down here for another department.
Based on the jobs they do.
Right, but it still, it still is defined by meets requirements or needs improvement, which means you're not meeting the requirements of your job.
As this is done now, when the supervisor brings them in and discusses this with them, you have a job description. You have this task to do and that task and somebody else. Are there criteria? Your job is to fill tanks full of gasoline. And do you have unsatisfaction because it's only half full most days? Or you have to have exact things that you can check off on your checklist? So when he comes in, you can say, you were given this task and there's four ways that we can measure whether you did it or not. You didn't do this, you didn't do that. But there should be some written evaluation scale.
It's the job description itself that identifies what individuals should or should not be doing. And then it's the evaluation that says, do they have the job skill and knowledge? Do they have a working relationship and interaction with others? Are they organized? I mean, maybe someone is completely knocked-
But you need, but you need to have something in there. Are you organized? How can you tell if they're organized?
Well, that has to be up to the department head.
Well, I know, but that ought to be, the department head needs to spell that out so you can-
Well, you all know, we've all been in the real world where, yes, some people are go-getters. In other words, if they're about this job, done, they was working on the grader. They says, what else can I do? I'll go work on it.
And then some people just sit the shade.
Some people are going to sit the shade now. So we all have them all over the world all the time. And, uh, so that's, that is hard.
That's why the responsibility falls on the department head to make those determinations.
Yeah, the manager should know.
Only he or she knows specifically what this person should be doing.
I agree too.
And, you know, did you ask to have more responsibility? Did you come in early or stay late when no one else?
Some people are ambitious and some aren't. Simple as that.
Which is why I don't believe in straight across the board.
Oh, and I agree with you. I'm just-
Well, I don't need that.
I understand your question. This first, this first evaluation is not going to be what everyone's-
Well, I'm afraid, I'm afraid we're going to have one department that is not going to, some people won't get nothing. They're going to be upset about it. And, uh, and they're already, uh, some people, employees in our, under the county employees that are unhappy doing things. You know what I'm saying?
I understand.
So whatever, I'm not against you. I'm just saying be forewarned that that can happen. I'm not against it though. No, I, I think what you guys are doing, what we're doing here is good because you got to have a state, a standard. You got to have a system to do something.
So then let's just do the four.
Okay.
Four increments.
What you guys just suggested.
10, 15, 20, and 25.
10, 15, 20, and 25. Do what's that now? 60%?
That's 60, 70, 75, and 80.
6, 70, 75, and 80, okay.
That's what it comes, that's what it falls on.
Do we need a motion?
I will make the motion to, uh, set up our merit plan based on the evaluation ratings. If one score 60 or above, between 60 and, and 69, you get 10. Between 70 and 74, you get 15. Between 75 and 79, you get 20. And 80 or above, you get 25. Does that work?
Correct. I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded to set-
Do I need to say that again?
Um, no, I can get it.
It has been moved and seconded to set the pay scale raise increases in those four segments. Any more discussion?
That'd be for merit raises.
For merit, for the merit raises based on the evaluations.
Right, based on evaluation.
No, is this studying a policy from now on? This is what it will be or is that just for this calendar?
No, I think it needs to be done specifically to each year's evaluations because if you set that, then the department head can sit back and say, well, I make sure I give everybody an A2. Do you know what I mean? You want to, you want to reevaluate this every time you do a evaluation.
So this is all good for this year and maybe we may redo this in January, February?
And I move, we amend the original motion to have this as a test bed for the rest of this year to see how it's going to work and we will reevaluate it starting next year.
So I'll second the amendment to say 2000, for 2019, initial evaluation. Let's vote on the amendment. Those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Amendment carries to the original motion. The original motion is to set the pay scale for the four increments, which will now be qualified as just 2019. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for the pay scale. Now we need to re-enter into executive session to assign that per individual so that we can come out and then set their new pay rate so that when they get their paycheck this, for this pay period, which begins June, July 1st.
Would it be effective July, this, end of this month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
26th.
Yeah.
Okay.
July 26th.
June.
Oh, oh, it's from, I'm sorry. It's not from the first. It's from the last pay period of last month. Oh, okay. Um, I move to enter into executive session for 25 minutes to apply merit-based diva, uh, merit-based raises. And, and, um, I need to look at these. Maybe we should do these first. I, I-
This should be a couple minutes longer.
I know, but then we have to do these.
Yeah, but I mean, just for this particular action, assigning numbers, that's two minutes.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to put, then I'm going to include this and review-
EMS.
Unfinished evaluations. I'll just put it that way.
Is that it? I'll second.
Pursuant to number one.
I'm sorry?
Pursuant to KSA 75-
Oh, I forgot what I was doing. Where is my? Where is that? Too busy shuffling papers. Pursuant to KSA 7543192B. Here it is. I don't know how I did that. 7543192B number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to reconvene in the commission room with the commission and the acting HR clerk.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye? Aye. Motion carries.
The rest, we'll take it five minutes.
Yeah, I'll recess for-
For 10 minutes.
Yeah, I'll recess for 10 minutes.
Whatever you need to do.
We'll recess for 10 and then we'll come back. Okay, um, I guess we can just finish this session. How long do you think it'll take to do those?
We're going to give them a evaluation.
Yeah, we need to do the scale.
Yeah. For each question?
For each person. Yeah, just the six questions for each person.
I don't know. How many have we got? Like 10?
Hmm, let me, I'm writing them down right now.
Seven or eight or nine. We got Ray and Stratt and then we got Shiloh and-
Well, how do we determine those numbers? Are they on their forms?
Look at this page. Take this page and then-
Yeah, but how do we decide where they fit in here?
Well, that's what we have to talk about.
We'll have to discuss what we think your performance is on each issue.
Yeah.
And again, that's subjective because it's-
Right.
Based on what we know.
But I think it's not fair to not do them at all because then we don't get a, you know.
We should do it.
It, it wasn't their fault that they didn't have a department head.
Do we need to go- Do we need to go?
What is Mr. Detmer's first name?
Dale.
Well, Rollin'. But he goes by Dale.
Okay, I, I saw that on.
Everybody calls him Dale Detmer. His dad's name was Rollin'. So that's his real first name. Should we go exec now?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to go into executive session for evaluation, for employee evaluation. Uh, move the recess of executive session for how long?
I think we need twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes for the person of discussing, uh, personnel evaluations. And pursuant to KSA seventy-five, four, three, one, nine, two, B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. And then to reconvene into the courthouse basement, the commission room. And with the personnel of the commission along with the county clerk.
I'll second.
Okay, we've seconded for twenty-minute executive session to finish the evaluations. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so we're out of executive session.
What's okay, Mary?
Easy.
Yeah.
It's okay.
You don't have to worry about that. No. I'm sorry, I haven't heard what's been arranged. So the issue is, um, Corey Ull put in a request to extend the gravel road because it passed Jim Cherry's house for about three quarters of a mile, let's say, give or take. And, um, we talked about going and starting the prep work because we may do a mixture of a topping with sand and gravel, but nothing's been done yet. And I had called Michael and asked him what the plan was, and he said he didn't have a plan. They were waiting on the weather. But then when I talked to, uh, I, I asked the office to have the operator, the blade operator who does that road call me. And he said, they need culvert sanding. So that should be done first. I mean, that makes sense. If you're gonna dig up the road, dig it up before you put the top in. So I think there was a confusion about what we had done and when, who can coordinate that. And this is the same issue we come up with.
Uh, I hope a lot of this gets solved. Maybe when they present their plan and hear how they're organizing, what they're gonna do, and they can do what, and we can sit down and figure that out.
Michael is gone, so.
He's gone, but.
Oh.
Jesse.
She was gonna get justice.
Can come and do.
Where is Michael?
Is, did he take a family leave?
Hello?
Dad is sick.
Um, yes, we were here in, at the commission waiting on two blade operators.
Uh, we were told they was not supposed to show up there.
Michael didn't order them over.
Um, who told you they weren't coming?
Uh.
Who, who said that they weren't coming?
Uh, Michael said that they weren't supposed to go there, so.
Why is that?
I just do, I have no clue what was going on, so that's just what we were told, so. I don't, I don't know.
Well, and where is Michael today?
He is at Oklahoma with his father. So on his way to Oklahoma to see his father.
And, so what are you working on today?
Uh, we were working on getting ready to reshape the road and hauling gravel.
Where is that?
Are we hauling gravel?
Where are you reshaping the road and hauling gravel?
Well, they're reshaping the roads over, I don't even remember what the name of it is, but over by Danny Cheney's and we're hauling gravel over west, east side of the county and the west side and.
Would you, uh, have you guys worked yet or started to work on that Corey Ull request for gravel? He was gonna build a house on that.
On Bison.
On Bison. Have you started any work on that area?
Bobby was supposed to go down there and start cleaning the ditches if it was dry enough. But I don't think it's dry enough down there. Everything's swampy.
Do you have culverts that need replaced on that road?
I don't know that there's any that have to be replaced, but.
Who did the assessment for that road, for this project? Did you or did Michael?
I don't think anybody did yet. Bobby was just gonna go down and start to clean things up so we could see what we needed. So I don't know if he got to that yet or not.
How are you keeping track of all these projects? You said you're hauling to the west, you're hauling to the east. You have Bison project that hasn't been started. You have a road reshaping by Mr. Cheney. How are you keeping track of this?
Well, same way we keep track of everything. Memory here. Just trying to keep these guys working, so.
Did you hear from Mr. Whacker, uh, David Whacker?
Oh, yes, we heard from him and we're hauling something on there too.
Yeah, he's complaining again, Union Drive when it rains.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we probably, we need to do some good rock in there and fix that problem. Uh, I know it costs money, but because he's having a complaint there a lot with that. Steve Snyder's also. Union from one eighty-one going west, what, four, three, four miles there.
Yeah. Thinking we're just need to put pavement down, I guess. We're working on it, so.
You might wanna do some roadstone rock or some other good rock in there. Maybe some more, maybe some sand too to blend with that clay. I know that clay's bad. And when they put it out there originally, it's gonna be slimy. Over years it'll maybe stabilize, but right at the top, if we're gonna have to keep putting that clay out, we need to put sand and rock with it to begin with, because it's a nightmare mess for a year, it seems like, unless you do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we did.
Okay.
We're working on it.
So are you able to produce a list of the projects that you're working on and expected end dates and what the logistics of your equipment is?
Yeah, probably could, but what's the use of that? We're getting our projects done as they come to us. I mean, was we supposed to be at the meeting today that I didn't know about or what?
You had two blade operators that were supposed to show up today to discuss exactly what their plan is for this project, that you just relayed the information was left up to him, one of them.
Commissioner Flew asked these two grader drivers to come up here on that Corey Ull road about what, uh, what was happening there. That was the issue.
Have you given, you said that Bobby was supposed to be looking into this. Have you give him, given him any work assignments?
No, we don't give people work assignments. We tell them what they need to do and they go do it. So.
These are best addressed after Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, have you, has there anybody started to work with this three-one-one, uh?
Mobile three-one-one program?
Mobile three-one-one program and the hardware with that. I heard some reports, some people are saying, some grader drivers saying they were using that and recording some of that data and had.
We have been for all the FEMA stuff.
Oh, for the FEMA stuff? But nothing, but nothing.
That's why we're getting our pictures and.
Okay.
The.
Okay, so you're utilizing it then now and you're getting pictures and you're getting?
A little bit, yes. Which works.
Well, that's good. Yeah, then you create like a database or something. Hopefully that would help you guys. You know, know what you got to work with and prioritize things, hopefully. That's the idea, right?
I think so. That deal is not part of my deal. I don't know how it's all supposed to work, so.
I called in the other day and you were in the office with a salesperson from Carrico. What exactly was that meeting about?
Uh, getting close on a new skid loader and a new mini excavator.
So you, you scheduled that meeting?
Did I schedule it? Me and Michael did, yes, with the Carrico salesman.
So you and Michael both sat in on a sales pitch from Carrico?
Well, they've been talking about that excavator before.
We got serious problems with our Bobcat equipment. The service sucks. And we need to find a different route here. It's broke down half the time and
Your Bob?
You're getting nothing done when it's broke down.
The skid loaders?
The mini excavators, the machine we use the most.
Okay.
The skid loader has had problems too.
Okay.
But the only service we get's out of Manhattan, and that's a long ways to drive.
No one in Slida?
We could be going to Ellsworth.
You can't get, uh, some, uh, equipment from Ellsworth or Slida or Boyd to, uh, do that with, or?
Yes, that's where we would like to go is to Ellsworth, because the service would be a million times better.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's good to check on that stuff. That's a.
We're just trying to get ideas around so we can present it to you guys.
Yeah, that's fine.
And so my original question is why the blade men weren't here that are supposed to be, at least one of them you said is in charge of this project and why they didn't come?
I can't tell you what the, I was just told they were not supposed to go to the meeting, so.
So you called them and told?
I can't, I don't know. I, you know, Bob and I were supposed to be at the meeting. We'd have been there.
It, it was, it was supposed to be the blade operators that, and the one of them especially that you put in charge of the project.
Probably the, maybe the assistant road supervisor or whoever's in charge of these guys should know about this stuff too.
Um, you just told us about five or ten minutes ago that you were given, you gave that responsibility to Bobby Zacco.
No, when they were supposed to come to this meeting, we were not even advised of that.
Yes, you were. It was, it was ordered through the clerk to have them come.
Who ordered the clerk?
I did, as the chairperson. I asked them to come and be on the agenda.
Well.
Let's, let's.
We can review that more Monday, because they're gonna come.
Okay.
I think we can arrange something for Monday, maybe. So.
We will be discussing this.
Yep.
Goodbye.
Okay, so I can finish my dinner now?
I'm sorry?
Right. Can I finish my dinner now? I'm right in my, middle of my lunch.
Eat your lunch.
You have a good day.
Yeah, go ahead, either one.
I would like ten minutes of our time here a little bit.
An executive session?
No, Jennifer said I can't do an executive session.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, since we don't have them here, let's.
I've got, I'm new to this thing, but I've been in the county a long time. You're looking at the premier board of county commissioners this county has ever had. All right? You got high-level staff work. You got an MBA. I got tickets that you won't believe. We're the smartest three people in the county, probably. So there's no reason we ought to be fucking around with little rinky-dink problems. The highway department doesn't.
You just saw what we have to deal with.
I know, we're gonna solve it.
Okay, all right.
They, uh, uh, their morale is shot to hell.
Yeah.
People pick on them. They always have, since I was a kid. Highway department is a needy department. One of the problems that we have is, as the board of county commissioners, we shouldn't deal with anybody that department heads. And we ought to chew their ass up one side down and praise them on the other side. In management one-on-one, they tell you right away, you can only work one level up and one level down in any organization, however.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you there by saying, the reason why I requested the people to come that were gonna do the actual work
Yeah.
is because you just heard that they were given the instruction. And I will tell you that in my conversation with them, there was zero communication. So if we can't find out what the breakdown is, how do you work with just one person?
That's why Monday, we're gonna have their organization meeting. And we're gonna deck and Jane that, exactly who does what and how they do it.
Well, we have an insubordination problem is what we actually have.
Yes, we do. We shouldn't have it. There's, you can have a whistleblower operation and somebody is not treated fairly over there, which you shouldn't bypass.
It's not about them treated fairly. It's about no work orders being given. It's in the job description that they're supposed to be giving work orders.
And there's a major rebuild that's gonna have to be done in the highway department. All right, that, that's a given. And so until we do that, we can't do anything about that. It doesn't need good to holler somebody that doesn't know what's going on over there, probably weren't informed.
Well, I'm not aware. I mean, I've been sitting here for two and a half years watching this debacle.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of how much you've been exposed to the breakdown and the lack of efficiency that we're dealing with.
Not very much. But what I am saying is, you have to make your department heads responsible to us. And you have to make them understand when we tell them something, they gotta do it.
And that has never happened in two and a half years.
I understand that.
And so what I would like to press upon you is the idea that when I'm told repeatedly, and I can pull up the videos if you wanna see it, the department head has told me that each blade operator is responsible for his own route. Now, in my mind, that means that there needs to be direct communication from time to time on specific issues. And just like we dealt with Mr. Schneider's road for months, months and months. And part of that is the landowner coming directly to the board. But, you know, if that really was the, the possession of the department head, that that was up to the blade, the blade operator on that route, then we didn't need all of that communication. We could have said, okay, Mr. Winkler, you know, this is your route. And I'm just making up because I don't really, Mr. Wacko, I don't know whose, whose route it was. But if they had specific plans and they were implementing those plans, that makes them a more valuable employee. And if we don't know where they are as far as doing their own coordination, then how are we gonna approve any structure that is presented to us?
We've got to make sure that the department head has the control of that and knows what's going on and can come in and communicate that.
Well, I can show you two years' worth of videos that show that that's not happening.
I understand that. That's why Monday, we're going to have a come-to-Jesus meeting in here. And some of it's our problem and some of it's his. And we need to fix both of them. Like I said, we're too smart to let a little rinky-dink thing like this get in the way. We know how it's supposed to work.
Okay, it's rinky-dink that you've been on the board for three years, for three weeks, but what I'm saying is, this is five or six years now.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Again, that's rearview mirror. We can't go back and fix that stuff. But we can start today and we can make it work from here on. And it's gonna be mean and bloody, but it's gonna work. And it works according to management procedures and we ought to insist on that and do it. We had, uh, one of the things that gets us into trouble as commissioners is unless we are in this session, in this thing, we're not a commissioner. So it's very difficult, not difficult, it's impossible. A lot of it's Kansas.
Right, you can't have community.
We can't go over there and walk over to the EMS folks down there and say, I'm the county commissioner and that ambulance didn't clean, clean it. That's an illegal order and we shouldn't do it. We can, however, if you have something to do, we can bring them in here and discuss them in session. And this board can say, uh, Madam Chairman, I would like you to go down to the ambulance station and check it out and inspect it and see if it needs work.
Right.
That's an authorized thing. But on my own, I can't go down there and say, that's a damn dirty ambulance.
But you are allowed to go on your own to collect any amount of information that you want and bring it back here.
As long as you're recognized as you're a public citizen and not a commissioner.
No, what I'm saying is, it's my prerogative to go out to the road, look at it, see what's going on with the road, and bring my information back here.
Absolutely, you're supposed to do that.
I can talk to the operator. I, in, in fact.
You can't do that.
That's absolutely wrong. That's absolutely wrong.
As a private citizen, you can.
I, I didn't say tell the operator. I said talk to him.
You can talk to him.
You're allowed to gather any amount of information that you need to.
I agree.
And what my request for today was, was to get the information that the person on. And what my request for today was, was to get the information that the person on site, boots on the ground, has to you guys.
Yeah, but...
Because it doesn't do me any good to collect all that information if you can't hear it firsthand.
But you can't, you can't have him come up here, you can have his boss tell him to come up here, but when you give him a directive...
I didn't tell him to come here, I asked the clerk to put them on the agenda through the highway department.
But there's a breakdown somewhere probably between here and there, and I don't know and that's academic, because there's nothing you can do to fix it, and we won't go anywhere.
Unless you're willing to stand up and get rid of the problem.
Well, that Monday we're gonna have to figure out what our interaction's gonna be with the department head, not just that one at all.
Well, I think between now and then, I'd like you to review some of the old videos so that you can see, because every week there's a meeting with the highway department.
I've, I've read the eleven minutes for the last two years.
Oh, good, perfect.
I just finished them, I got them on my desk, I've gone through, there's a lot of notes on them, I know too much and I really don't know, but I understand that, you know, we've got to have a highway department.
Absolutely.
And we've got to have one that works, but we also need to know that the only way it's gonna make it work is if we force them to do their job.
Exactly.
And we can't do it for them, I can't go tell the guy how to grade, but we just, we just need to lean on them a little bit. Now, let's talk about some other stuff here. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but we need to think about some things. This county is fragmented, and I don't know why, and it's been that way for a hundred years, and there's nothing we can do about it. Maybe if we were more county commissioners rather than district commissioners, and I don't know if that makes a difference, but there's got to be some stuff that we can do to get this county put back together or at least quit shooting each other, and it's in the back of our minds, I think we ought to keep as a goal to minimize that, and there's, there's little frictions that pop up that, for example, the senior centers between Sylvan and Lincoln, and I think that could have been resolved a lot more friendlier. We know everybody in both of them, and I don't know why they get fired, but that's, that's been solved, and that's not an issue, but...
Well, I'd like to point out something, though.
Go for it.
There was no issue between the senior centers, it was with this third-party organization that the commission gave charge of the money all the time.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand.
With the council on age.
Yes, there was no rift between the two senior centers, it was the fact that both senior centers had to report to another agency, and there was favoritism from that agency.
I've been involved in that for almost 20 years.
Yeah.
I think you're better off now, the last...
They are.
Six months or eleven.
I'm, I'm just saying, little things like that.
I think that's getting better because we've taken a lot of the power away from the council on age and had to deliver the money now, we just distributed money, the commission did, to Sylvan and for the senior centers.
What I wanna do is watch these things develop, and we can get them when they're small, and see if we can't fix them.
Yeah.
Like the road thing out in the Lake District, whatever the hell that's called. It's a big deal out there, it's been a legal argument, and it's been, we don't have to do it if we don't wanna do it, or you can't come on here, we don't care about that. Monday, Jennifer's gonna come in here, I'm sure, and tell us the actual general's opinion is correct, and we need to fix the roads, we don't have to build the roads to a 60-foot right-of-way, you have to maintain and build what you got, and it's terrain-dependent. That's a problem that we can solve.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
And up until now, according to, what was his name, Epstein that came in here, or the homeowner?
Larry Enfield.
Enfield, yeah.
Enfield.
But he has, was very active.
Me too.
Well, he was active, and probably with some justification, but we can stop that problem, and we're not gonna solve his problem because there's always gonna be an issue there, but he's gotta get a little bit and we gotta get a little bit, but I think we've got most of this under control, and what I'm asking is you just keep an eye on this. And I really am serious about this board, this county is never gonna see a board like this again, and we ought to be smart enough between the three of us to fix a whole lot of stuff that's just never been done.
I think we're on the way for it.
I do too, and we all come from different directions, we've got different ideas, and we're never gonna agree on everything.
But that's a good thing, but that, right, that's a good thing.
Well, this, this body right here has talked more in the three weeks I've been sitting on here than you did in three years before that, and you can just go back and back.
Yeah, we communicate well, and that's what you gotta do.
Yeah.
No, we may not agree on everything, but that's okay too, we gotta communicate, find out how, solve problems.
One of the things we gotta do is, and this is personal, is we gotta do something about Donna, we gotta like girl over, she does stuff that she's supposed to be doing, and we probably inadvertently give her things to do that we shouldn't have.
Well, I think some of that is being addressed, one of the major problems is the HR situation.
Exactly.
You know, to ask one elected official to oversee all the HR is very pointed, and for us three to have control over an HR person is much different than for someone doing HR out of her office.
If you're on HR, you got somebody that's writing a paycheck and somebody that's telling them what to do, and if that isn't the same person, you gotta build any conflict.
Agreed, right.
So that's something that we need to solve, we've got to resolve, however we do it, whoever writes the paycheck gets to tell you what to do, that's just the way life works.
Right.
And I presume, Madam, that you will tell us when you have an issue that we need to do something about.
But we're pursuing that too, like with the health insurance or our benefits plan, hopefully if we're trying to get a, I don't know, somebody, we should take some, do some of that, yeah, we're trying to work.
I just wanted to...
No, Jim.
...foul off today, but that...
No, that's a good idea, no, yeah.
We need to tighten up our procedures and how we talk to people and do things.
Yeah.
And they've got to be more responsive to us, and I think it'll work.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with it, be, be more organized.
So what do you suggest then, let me put it as a question, what do you suggest about a project that was assigned approximately a month ago, that has had zero paperwork done and zero communication? Wait, and now I, you say not to be district commissioners, but I do have a, I have a favoritism for my district because they voted me in, okay, so I feel obligated to represent the constituents there, so someone in my district is building a new house, which generates more income for us, and I would like to make sure we accommodate that person. Now, we can, we can agree on a new policy if you don't wanna pay 100% of the cost to upgrade a road, I'm, I'm okay with any kind of that change, but here we are, and now I'm getting phone calls that this person would like to move in in three weeks, and not one thing has been done, not a culvert changed out, the, the assistant supervisor doesn't even know if there are culverts to be changed out, in case you didn't catch that one.
That's because nobody's put their feet to the fire, Monday they're gonna come in here with a, an organization structure and work plan and all that stuff, and they're going to have to develop a priority list of things to do that can be changed, it's got to be done, I don't care what he's screaming, kicking, hollering, we have to be able and to call up and say, do you have a list of projects and priority, and they gotta have it and write it.
Okay.
And to change that priority, only the boss over there can change it.
But I want you to know that it's already in their job description, and they're not doing it.
I understand that, that's why we're gonna have a come-to-Jesus meeting on Monday, everybody's got to understand.
But how many years of second chances do you get, is kinda where I'm coming from?
I don't know.
You know, if your job description says do X, Y, and Z, and every time we turn around that something is not being done that's in those job descriptions, we can't keep blaming the operators and, and the men that are, that are being told what to do.
That's when you beat your shoe on the table and say you're not doing your job, but you can't go back and say you didn't do it yesterday, you can only say, as of this moment from here on, this is the way it's gonna be, period.
Yeah, we're trying to do that.
I know you are.
We have that.
But it's, you know, you can't go back and fix something that happened sometime.
Well, I will also say that with our new advertisement, I believe we're advertising a dollar amount that makes it more worth someone's while to have to bring in the hammer and say, do it this way and that way and these expectations, and it's more than a 40-hour a week job.
I understand.
I mean, you guys have worked for yourselves, I've worked for myself, who puts in 40 hours a week? I would love to put in 40 hours a week, that's not how it works.
Yeah, let's talk about that job for a second.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, again, I read all the minutes, and we have no structure now that that job will fit into.
That's why we're doing a restructuring.
That's why...
That's why, that's why watching the meetings is more important than reading the minutes because we've talked about that.
Yeah, but that, then you have to make those official minutes, and they're not right now.
No.
On television, but they're coming in Monday, and they're going to present us a plan and an organization structure, and they're gonna lay it on the table, and it's gonna be in some detail, and then we're going to decide whether it's a good plan or a bad plan or how it's gonna go, but they've gotta give it to us Monday, and then we're gonna take some time to read it and study it and mark it up or agree with it or whatever, but until we get that plan approved, which we don't right now have an approved plan, and we have that job description out, but we don't have an approved organizational chart to have that job in.
Well, we were doing that and then you assigned the task to him, which is fine, I, I voted for what you motioned.
Yeah, I know, and that's, we must, we need to have a...
But I would let you know that prior to this, I'd already asked the department head to, I didn't actually say a restructure, but...
I saw, I saw, I read the minutes.
Right.
Well, we, we was talking about replacing Bob House for months now with a new highway department supervisor, and her and I reviewed this, and looked what we, and we decided let's make it a director position.
Yeah.
Get rid of, we got rid of the public works thing, now, uh, the...
But your vehicle for doing that is the organization that they haven't had, and that vehicle's gonna be in here Monday, and then that's when we sit down and we approve, disprove, or change whatever structure they have.
Yeah.
And then we gotta have a motion that this is the way it's gonna be.
I agree.
Yeah.
Right now, we don't have any motion on the table to approve that plan, we gotta do that.
Yeah.
I agree, but we had taken steps to undo what was done a few years ago, which was to make all these combine, to combine things and then create another position, which when you look at the job descriptions of those two positions, one is actually subordinate to the other, but they're of the same tasks.
Yeah, but let's see what they've got that's gonna happen here.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll take the week or whatever you think we ought to have to mark it up.
Well, and I would like to address something you said prior, which was, what happens when you have a conflict over who needs what equipment, okay, if you have, you know, my suggestion is to have someone dedicated to bridges and culverts, you call them culverts if they're less than 20-foot span, but it's still a bridge, okay, so whether it's a box culvert, a stone arch culvert, whatever it is, and your bridges, everything from concrete down to the old rusty metal ones, if, if we don't have someone that is specifically designated to that countywide, it's not going to get addressed.
Well, but let's see their plan, they're supposed to have that in the front. They're supposed to have a, a bridge guy.
Well...
I don't know.
What I'm saying is, my purpose was taking away the road responsibility from the bridge person because no one person...
Exactly right.
I don't care how smart you are, how many degrees you have, or how much experience...
That's what I told you when we were discussing, what I wanted to bring in, I wanted to see a, a bridge group, a road group, and a gravel group that does all the traveling and hauling.
Right.
And let's just see what they bring in.
So to go back to what you were saying about equipment, let's say, you know, we only have the one bulldozer that works in the pit, and then we have the other smaller bulldozer, at least small, so let's say you need both because you're really restructuring the entrance.
Some managers are gonna own all three of those.
But what I'm saying is, the highway director has the final say, if he says your bridge is gonna wait a week because I'm not done with so-and-so's road, then that's his decision because the bridge person is subordinate to the highway director in my structure.
Well, that's the way it's supposed to be in his structure, let's see how it comes in.
Well, and I... Well, they're important that they do it now, when they have a bridge now versus gravel road, somebody has to make a decision, you get to, get the bulldozer over there and haul, haul rock over here, or go to the bridge, or go over here for the road, somebody's making that decision now.
I worked at three miles an hour, simple mine, and I wanna see on the wall a chart of your projects and priority order, and I can move them up and down, but I'll just see on there.
So I've been asking for that for two and a half years.
I talked, but I can't, we, we manage, we need an organization, we schedule prioritization, what's first, second, third, fourth, fifth, because obviously, we've got, we've got 20, 30 bridges in this county need fixed, well, some are a lot worse than others, well, what then, what's, are used more than others?
We shouldn't be messing with his priority plan, that's his job, and we can...
There isn't one.
Well, there hasn't been much of one, she drives, that's why we've kinda taken the reins and tried to micromanage that, he definitely does that.
I cannot express how thankful I am that you think this way, because two years ago I asked for an organizational priority list, and the, the board would not make that a demand.
Your board's gonna have some teeth to bite people in the ass, all right, let's face it.
Well, I appreciate that because it's always, you know, you're the bad guy if you expect too much.
I want it to run like it's supposed to run, that's not too much to ask.
I agree.
On their side and our side, so if we wanna priority this, I gotta do it.
I meant the priority to...
No, but, oh, I know, oh, no, I know, I know.
Where I started with here was, you can't ask for anything because everything is fine, yet things are falling apart around us, and I'd like you to watch the meeting where one of the people who put in a road request explains that his, that his request or complaint was thrown in the garbage and thrown by other people in the highway department, that, to me, was enough then to say, it's over.
Yeah, I, without justification, again, what we have to have a system now is, and what we're gonna have is, the road guy, whoever, whatever his name is, whoever it is, is in charge, and if somebody has a complaint, like sharing about a road, I want to see that they talk to the people in the chain of command, and if they refuse to talk to her, they don't do anything, then she can come to us, but she can't come beforehand, she's got to talk to them first. If she comes to us, we gotta re-initiate the whole procedure, start off, it's a whole lot central on everybody.
So you're saying the job description of the highway director is to take direct complaints from the public?
Yeah, right.
It's in there, that's in there.
Yeah, I know, but it hadn't been enforced, because we let the public think if they can come straight to us.
No, no, that's where you're wrong, the public goes there and they get rejected or delayed, and then they come here.
That's, that's all right if they do that, but then whoever they go to has got to log that in and make sure that, you know...
Well, and there's another thing.
He can always say, no, that's not my priority list and I won't get that in a year because we may have fun.
And then he can, and then someone can justify that to us, but Mr. Enfield, Larry Enfield, explained to you that Norm Bowers is a retired engineer that works for KAC, I've, I've had conversations with this man as well, I got a complaint form, I actually instructed the highway department office to get a complaint form from Norm Bowers, just like you're saying, we wanna see that it's documented, that Mrs. Doe came in, said this needs done, the sign never got put up, and now she's coming to the board, okay, there's the chain of events.
But we get to have...
They won't use that paperwork, so what do you do about that?
When she complains, we have to have, you know, put it in there, we have to have a response from whoever that complaint went to.
How can you request that when they're allowed to take complaints down on sticky notes and random pieces of paper and other people's personal notepads?
That's our problem with management, we tell management what we have to...
They've already been instructed to use the form, and then it's been told to us by our subordinates that they won't do it, yes?
I'm saying that, they may have been instructed, but we got teeth to bite them in the ass, now we're gonna bite them in the ass, they're gonna have to do what we tell them.
How many times?
Once. Well, that's just, I mean, get serious here.
Well, you're talking to someone who's given, been a part of getting those instructions multiple times.
Which you haven't had, uh, acting, you haven't had...
It's always been okay in the end because no one wants to say this right off.
Assuming Randy's gonna go along with this stuff, we're gonna make this work.
It doesn't matter.
And it works better on everybody if they get it in the line. Well, I don't, you know.
No, I understand.
And we-
And, and I feel for you, because it's hard to come straight onto the board and, and seem like you're being a tyrant, and that's really not what it is. It's years of confusion and years of insubordination.
But it's easy to fix, is what I'm saying.
I agree.
We can fix it, so let's just fix it.
Well, I think we-
We're too good a board enough to let this go away. Let's fix it, and we can fix it on the spot. This isn't gonna be an arguable thing.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree, Jim, that's right.
Well, I wanna thank you for accommodating me for everything that I've had to do, from having my child here to asking for extra meetings to get things done, reorganizing things, doing evaluations for the first time. I mean, I appreciate all of that, because I feel that it's been instrumental in creating some good changes that, they do not seem good at first to the employees. I understand that, but the public thinks it's wonderful.
Well, no, evaluations, I, I know, I complained a little, no, but they'll get better, and the more you do it, they'll get used to it. First time you do anything, people are awkward about it, because they've never done it before. The more and more you do it, it becomes a routine, and then the management will know how to coordinate with employees better.
Right.
Yeah, our business is to run this county properly.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Saving money and keeping people occupied.
So that brings me to my next question, and we can go soon, but how do we want to do this budget issue? We have an hour set apart for Monday, is it an hour? So I think preliminarily, we need to lay out all the budgets, look at the totals that they came up with for this year, look at last year, look at our to- grand total, and do a little bit of comparison to see where we are, because some of them are the same, some of them are slightly reduced, but then a few are, are larger. So I think we need to-
I'll be happy to review that.
Not again.
But you know, I don't have a feeling for it. I may not be what you see on this first time around.
Well, me either. I'm new too, but what, what kind of review done I like this?
Well, here's the thing. Our valuation went up already, so, you know, you have to create a level between your valuation and your mils, but the problem is, when by, when, when the valuation goes down, then your mils are down, you can't necessarily spike them without creating a huge increase. So there is that to consider, and I know that was one of the main concerns of the board prior, and I understand that. But there's also the greater concern, which is, we cannot continue on a trajectory that is continually going up.
You're gonna have to. You have no choice.
I have a choice.
Demographics, if you lose four percent of your population a year, and your expenses are constant, and they're actually going up too.
But the question is, why are our expenses constantly growing for a shrinking population? That is the question.
Because you still have the same number of roads that you ever had.
Well, that's one department. That's one department.
Still have the same hospital.
Services. We still have the same services.
All those services.
And now as we get it, like, but we-
You're gonna have to trim them back.
We're trying to think about trimming them back.
Same amount of people in the courthouse. You're gonna have the same, who are you gonna get rid of? There's the problem.
It's, it's, it's attrition, though. If there's an attrition policy, then you can do that, because-
But that's the only way you're gonna keep from having to increase taxes four percent every year is to decrease your expenditures. And that's one of the ways is attrition. You're not gonna decrease it in the road department, because theirs is gonna go up if you're more expensive all the time. The sheriff's department, you can't get rid of those guys.
EMS, really?
EMS, you're gonna have to have them.
Of course, we do have a bigger EMS department in a lot of counties, too. Maybe we can, someday we could address that.
But it's-
The problem is, when you start talking like this, then everyone gets fearful for their job. That's why if you have an attrition policy-
Then it's, we, then we just never refill it.
Right, and it's just like Dawn's done in her department, which I know you have an ad out right now for part-time. But, you know, we've been able to not necessarily shrink expenditures, because we were transferring them to the HR department. But if, let's just say we had filled that with someone who jumped on top of everything right away and got it organized, and then took on some other responsibilities, she would have not necessarily had to refill a position in her department. Right now, everything's in limbo, and we're talking about these management firms, and things have been a little bit unstable there. But I'll give you another example. Um, Mr. McQueen told us that other counties contract out all their mapping, and they don't have someone in the office doing it. So if we have someone in the office doing it, and that person retires or leaves, we should look at a contract.
Yeah.
You know, those are the types of decisions that need to be in the attrition policy for anyone after us to say, okay, we're not just gonna automatically refill, we're gonna see what can be outsourced.
And there's, uh, along your attrition policy, you need to expand that a little bit and decide which positions we have to have in order of priorities.
That you learn in your first commission class.
Then we have to have, uh, in addition to attrition, you have to have a, a way to laterally transfer people from one job to another.
Cross-training?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We have zero cross-training, as far as I'm concerned.
You need to do that, otherwise you're gonna-
Yeah, people should do cross-training. Like with David going three-one-one thing, that's good, cross-training. And also makes them more valuable, because they can do multiple tasks.
Exactly.
You know, in, in real world, that's they're doing all the time.
Let me give you an off-the-wall example. The Navy has created a whole new bunch of ships, and they're designed to work in shallow waters. And it's a hollow piece of iron, and they can configure weapons or cargo or whatever they want to do. The interesting point is, they have a captain who has a real job, and they have forty other sailors on there. And each of those sailors is able to do five other jobs. You can be a cook and navigator at the same time. And they configure it as to what they want. So if you're on that boat, and it could well be in here within reason, you should be able to do any one of ten jobs in this courthouse. And that's the cross-training. That gives you the maximum flexibility of laterally transferring, covering attrition, and so when you start writing or revising the, for that handbook, that might be something we wanna address.
And that way too, if somebody's out sick for a long time, we have somebody to help fill in.
Well, and it's my understanding, for example, in the appraiser's office, the, the second-in-command, I'll say, was also filling in helping with secretarial duties for the highway department at one time. You know, clerical work is clerical work. If you understand it, the numbers might be different, and the titles might be different, but it's still numbers and paperwork and filing and organizing, right, and certain computer programs. I mean, that's all, that's already cross-trained in my mind. Um, now, knowing specifics, that's up to the department, you know? But I think we can continue that conversation. I would like to see us initially get the budget in an outline form. Um, Dawn, what is our deadline date to get what we want entered into the system for the auditors?
Um, I just, basically what he needs is what you guys approve. Now, you guys can, because they-
We can change it after they give us everything.
You can make modifications on the form themselves, and then I can scan a copy, or I can do a spreadsheet for him or whatever. Um, technically, the budget is supposed to be approved in, in my office by August twenty-fifth, which would be August twenty-sixth, since it lands on a Sunday. So your meeting, your hearing notice needs to be in the newspaper ten business days, or ten days prior. So we would need to advertise by the fourteenth if we approved on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And, um, originally-
Take a little over a month.
Jeff had kind of planned on coming up in July, because, you know, all Joe had planned on being gone, but-
Let's push him.
I kinda didn't really tell him. I just didn't think that we would kind of let him know, but at some point in time, it may require-
When did you say the advertisement date would be? The fourteenth? Fourteenth, okay. So could we have him come on August twelfth?
Yes, but I'm not sure.
That's enough time?
Yes.
You want the week before then?
Potentially, because I'm not sure, depending on how long that takes, whether we can get it in the paper.
Oh, I see what you're saying. If it's not finalized till that evening or something, then you need to have it in ahead of time. So have we ever done a special meeting for that, or was that always on a Monday?
There has been times where they've had a special meeting. A lot of times, they like to hit, um, Mitchell County and Lake County at the same times. So they'll do like Mitchell County in the morning, Lake County in the afternoon, and I can see what dates they have set up.
Yeah.
What's the process for that auditor stuff? Do they have to approve the whole budget, or?
No, we paid the auditor to do the budget. Um, some counties, the clerk does the budget. Um, we have always paid the auditor to do it. I don't know at what point in time, but ever since I've been here.
I just didn't know what-
I will say, the, the last two that I've been a part of, they've already, they, basically Dawn just hands each department's budget to the auditor, and then he inputs. This year, we're gonna look at them first before we do the input of the data. But it is beneficial for him to have all of that on paper, because it comes to us in a format where we can say, okay, these are the line items, these are the totals, and then as you adjust it, it's already in the, the program instead of having to do everything by hand. I do think it saves some time with the final adjustments, but I would like to see us do the prior adjustments, just kind of getting a grip on where we are. Um, you're factoring in raises and salaries for the year, you're factoring in rollo- cash rollover for your- Well, that is a whole line item.
Hopefully, we can maybe, I don't know, maybe we save money in middle of it, who knows?
Well, let's get moving on that Monday, because if we take, what I'm thinking is, okay, July fifteenth, we'll be discussing, uh, benefits management companies, and July twenty-second. So if we make a decision by July thirty-first for a company, hopefully, they can get back to us. That's gonna be tight, though.
They're not gonna be able to.
We're gonna have three on Monday, right?
But after we do the publication of the hearing, we can still make edits.
Because lower, you just can't increase.
So if we went with the same dollar amount, let's say, just to be safe, when we publish the budget, then after that, when the benefits management company gets back to us, we can always decrease that. Okay? And that would be-
How long if we pick one of these, uh, uh, benefits companies, management companies? How long do they, we have, they have to?
I think they told us six weeks.
Maybe six weeks, though, to, before they could get-
To get us the real numbers.
Well, they have to give us all, or they have to get our information from our employees, and then they determine the, the cost of everything based on that.
Well, because they also have to contact the underwriters, and they have to get their numbers to match with the information that they've gathered for our claims history and our, um, if we do employee reports.
So we gotta be picking one of them here the next week or two, right?
Well, that's why we're coming back Monday to, to, to talk.
To get the three Monday and then-
And then pick one out of those three.
Pick one maybe next week, next Thursday.
And, and start communications with them right away.
Yeah, we get, we gotta get going with that.
Yeah.
One of them had a, oh, overdrop this day, but I don't remember.
Well, the state, we have to notify the state by October first, and, um, so we have to decide, and we have to have time to give that notification to the state. And a lot of those that they do it, um, well, the first two companies, they'll take care of the notification for us. They'll have you sign it, and then they'll overnight it to make sure that it gets to the state by the deadline.
This is kind of a no-brainer, but a lot of the company, a lot of the counties that were on the state plan for any given time have pulled out now, from what I've noticed, okay? Then I noticed that a lot of the counties that these companies use as references have stayed with that company for a period of time.
Seventeen, nineteen years and a couple of them.
Right, so it looks to me as if the state plan is going to do nothing but get more expensive, because their pool is getting smaller.
Yeah.
Well, chances are, the people who are having a hard time getting decent numbers out in the private sector with a broker, it's because their claims history is terrible. So they're gonna stay with the state, and the state's gonna have to increase prices to cover that, and we're not gonna benefit. So I think giving the state notice on October first is a no-brainer. We don't do that. We just go ahead and go with the broker. Whether we do partially self-funded or not, I think that's the decision that we're trying to make, which is risky, but it could really be beneficial. It, it's-
Could keep our expenses down.
Right.
And regardless, you have those high slips, you can't increase, I mean, we can increase, we can factor in the law enforcement, and if there's additional policies for law enforcement or ambulance, but regardless, you can't-
Ambulance is excluded from the tax lid? So ambulance, county attorney, and, and insurance department, that's it?
We can't raise taxes over a budget.
One, is it, did you find out the percentage yet?
One point four percent is-
That's what it was last year.
Once we get it approved, we can't go over that.
We can't increase our overall expenses by more than one point four percent, unless it's specifically for a department that she mentioned.
Like sheriff's department, they have emergency or EMS, like you had a-
No, you can budget. So like, for our health department-
A big calculation you have to figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to explain without-
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, we don't need to get weeds on this.
The spreadsheet will show us where we're, where we're-
Yeah, I know the budgets are complex, training, obviously, the most complex thing we gotta do.
It is. It is. Which is why I, I think it's great, especially for you guys in your first year, to do this analysis before we input the numbers, because every time before, we were just taking everyone's wish lists and plugging it right in. Well, then our numbers go like this, and then you have to start picking away. If we organize it first and say, well, hey, this department's not gonna get an eight percent increase, because we can't, then you put that lower number in from the get-go, and you're not doing all that after the fact, so that'll be much more efficient, honestly.
Works for me. So our next goal, though, is to select a help man by next week.
The company, a company.
Kind of one of these, one of these-
Benefits management.
And Jim and I have here, you're gonna borrow my stuff.
I would, if you don't mind. I'll, I'll get that on the way out.
Okay, it'll just be right there.
How many are there?
Five.
Five, okay, I was thinking six for some reason.
Well, we had, that, that pick one, you wasn't here for-
That's what I thought was the one that I-
They're, they're all, they're the green folder.
Yeah.
The green folder.
But, uh-
They're all in the same day.
Uh- Dawn, uh, you've been doing HR and, uh, doing benefits for many years, and you've, and here we're in the way you interviewed all these companies. Do you have a, I know we're gonna pick a three, but do you have a preference out of any of them? Because you probably know that, use that more than any of us do. Do you have a, one that you would prefer?
I have more ones that I would not prefer.
Not prefer, because I think-
Give us your bottom two.
The bottom two is CAU and this FCMI.
Why CAU, out of curiosity, because that's one of my choices?
Well, and actually, they, part of the reason why is because I, I think that they give you particular county reference information, because they know that they'll get a positive reference from them. If you notice, they don't give you everybody. I have heard a lot about this.
Where, from where? Or just?
Just at clerk's meetings.
Okay.
Um, I've just been told that-
About the partially self-funded plan, or just the company?
The company itself and the management. And you have to remember, we used to have BMI as well, which is a benefits management company as well. Um, providers just don't carry them. I would like to see the list of-
No, this one.
No.
Oh, that one, yeah, CAU.
I would like to see the list of providers.
Total, the total list, yeah. Okay, I see.
Incurrying us to, you know, contract, or contract with the hospital to show you a certain amount of the claims, that tells me that the hospital isn't a part of that, and it may be that our providers locally would have to take a huge cut from where we'd be able to service our employees, and is it worth it? I don't know. And does he insurance it just because he doesn't have very many counties, and it's like-
And he's a small, Jay's just a four-person outfit, so they're really a limited, small little outfit, so could they really handle us?
Yeah. And I don't know how long the city has been with them, but I-
I was down, I talked to Heather about them, and she's, I called these other, there's two other ones, they, they seem to like this day okay, but-
And that's probably the reason why I feel like it's your guys' decision.
Oh, I know, but I just, I'm just asking you, because you've done this for years, you know how a benefit system works, you know how it works, and I don't. Now, the Alexis is, I know, I find a lot more, and Jim brother too. But that's why I value your opinion here, because you, you've been through this for years and years, so-
I, I would guess, in a, with a partially self-funded plan, I can tell you, uh, when we were with BMI, they required you to cut up two checks, one, one check for the premium, one check for the soft loss, and they sent to, you know, all of the claims history. We had things that we probably should have never have seen as employees. Now, I'm sure that some of that-
Like the principal sealers of the, of the claims?
Yeah, like you would see area employees.
And what it entailed and, yeah.
And I'm sure regulations have changed with that, but, um, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I think any of them will be good, it's just a matter of what kind of insurance are we gonna get. And I'm a little concerned that CAU Valley and Day, the lowball, maybe even this company here-
The first year.
The lowball is the first year, and then we'll have a thirty to fifty percent increase, and with the tax lid, how do we afford it?
Right, and, well, let's not forget, though, we can still go with your basic group policy through Blue Cross or Aetna or whatever, using these companies as a broker. I mean, really, we only have three choices anyhow. It's Blue Cross, United, and Aetna. But the purpose of having this intermediary is to perform all the functions that you would otherwise, otherwise have to function as directly between the company and the, and the personnel. We've got sixty-five people.
They can help process this stuff, so you don't have to deal with employees. That's why-
So really, we're looking ultimately at customer service. Then we're looking at what options are. Because in my opinion, the second year would be a better year to try a partially self-funded, seeing the real-life numbers of what our, what our policies come out comparatively to what we've been on the state plan, and then what our claims history is even for that year will be important, which our benefits management company can have in hand when we go to make our decision the following year. But if we go with a company that doesn't offer anything partially self-funded, then we may be changing companies. So that's an up, that's a changer too, that we may not wanna face.
Now, and I don't know what this, FCMI, I did contact, uh, Smith County, and I just don't know how they, their, their premium is higher than what we pay through the state, but now they are-
Which county?
Smith. They are a partially self-funded, if I understand it right, and they're building their reserves right now. But I wanna say, um, the Plan A equivalent policy was like forty-eight hundred dollars a month. Yes.
Twice as much.
Yes, and that's why, it's like, I'm not sure. Now, she did tell me when I talked to her a little bit more that, um, well, they kind of have a Cadillac plan, and they have a older population and more claims and et cetera, et cetera. Plus, they're trying to boost their reserve, uh, to the maximum, so then eventually they will see a decrease.
Because they'll be subsidizing it, though.
But I can tell you that their employee that for a family plan was paying six hundred eighty-nine dollars. I don't know how an employee here can afford six hundred eighty-nine dollars for a family plan. I couldn't afford six hundred eighty-nine dollars. I'm just gonna be honest with you. I'd have to go get another job. And I don't have that hot, high of a cost of living, and, and I already have another part-time job. And, you know, we don't live beyond our means, so I have a child and a colleague, yes, that I'm helping for, but, um-
No, I agree. That's what I'm asking.
I'm not a, a young, I'm not a young family with children.
Well, that's just FCMI ones, the one you just said you're, have questions about.
Yeah, and I know, I, I've been to the clerk's meeting, and they, you know, counted and named off a few counties that have, that it was cheaper for them, and they failed to work me out of the state and make me to get out of jail or for you to contract me to get out of it, but, um, I just, I don't know. I worry. I worry that they don't, some, some of them don't want information. I have sent them information, so they add some information. They just don't have our claims information. And, and they said they provided a free bid, um-
I have, I, I have what I believe should be an executive session, maybe for five minutes right now. right now, for, well, I don't know, I guess it could go either way. I think we'll discuss it in open session eventually, because it would deal with a contract, but, um, part of it is a situation with one of our employees and, and what we've tasked him to do, and, and his feelings on it, um, I'm not sure, maybe I should just... Okay, I, I am gonna ask for five minutes.
All right.
Um, I move to recess into executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing county contracts for medical consultants pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, and that would be number three, to discuss employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representative of the public body or agency, to reconvene in the courthouse with the commission and the clerk.
All right.
So it's been moved and seconded for the five-minute executive session, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chima and Mr. Granzel are here too.
Yeah.
And then we can just talk it all at one time.
Well, that, yeah, that would be.
And that Tuesday, we got a board and made it hospital board, I can discuss it then too, I guess, but I'd like to almost see him come here, because I have one commissioner.
This Tuesday?
Yeah, I have one commissioner can't really do anything but listen there.
Well, you can, you can collect any amount of information that you want.
Collect information, oh, I ask questions and stuff about why you do this, why you do that, but, but.
Right.
But when, when we make him come here, then we can really, uh, determine what we're gonna do with things.